For the general public's better understanding of who will be conducting the meeting and who will be supporting those who are conducting the meeting. So, over here, to my left, your right, is Ms. Cooper, who is a member of this board. She's also a planning commissioner. This is Mr. Lambert. And then, right here, to my immediate left, is Vice Chairman Agawis. I'm Glenn Clark, the chairman of this board. To my right is Mr. Eisenbacher. And to his right is Mr. Desmond. And to the very end, over here, is Mr. McCauley. And that rounds out the voting members of this zoning board of appeals that will be deliberating here tonight. And at the side, Dais, is Mr. Evans, who is, during the day-time hours, during the week, works for the city in the compliance area. And for tonight's purposes, he will be representing the city administration to this board and supporting this board in our functions. And this, over here, at the very far end, is -- I did this before. I'm sorry. I don't have my glasses on. This is Mr. Motzni. And I do this every time now to him. I don't understand why I do that. But sometimes you have brain fog. So, this is Mr. Motzni. He is an assistant city attorney for the city of Troy. And during the day, that's his function. And for the meeting here tonight, he will be supporting our board as our legal advisor for all of our decisions when called upon. And at this point in time, I'm going to call on Mr. Evans to call the roll. And, Mr. Evans, if you can proceed with that, please. Thank you.
Mr. Clark.
I'm here.
Mr. Agawis.
Here.
Mr. Desmond?
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Here.
Mr. McCauley?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Okay, so we have a full board for tonight's meeting. And we will proceed with our procedures. We have rules and procedures that we govern ourselves by and that we expect all the board members to comply with, but also, these are going to be shared with the general public because you'll better understand how we're going to proceed forward at this point. So, I'm going to call on Vice Chairman Agawis to read our rules and procedures for the general public.
The zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by city council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand and, when recognized by the chairman, come to the podium. The speaker should identify themselves with name and address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, such as next-door neighbor, lived behind the property, et cetera, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to Oakland County Circuit Court.
Thank you, Mr. Agawis. So, at this point in time, we're going to move on to item number three, and that is related to the minutes of our September 18th meeting. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns by a member of the board about what was presented to us in our packet? Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the minutes.
It's a motion for approval, seconded by Vice Chairman Agawis. Is there any discussion by a member of the board? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Agawis?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. So, motion passes. We move on to item number four. This is related to the printed agenda that was in the foyer area and also available online for the general public to review. And, Mr. Evans, has something. Mr. Evans?
Yes, so we did also put, as part of the approval of minutes, and this is different than what the board normally does, we did find an error in the July 17th minutes that this board previously approved. So, we just need you to react upon that. And I've included those in your agenda packet. Just to give you an idea of where the deficiency was on variance request B for property on Hill, the motion and resolution said in the previous version to deny the request, yet the motion was to grant the request. So, that's the sole change in those minutes. So, we're just requesting that the board act upon that.
Related to July, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the city liaison regarding that? Mr. Lambert?
Not a question, but just a motion to approve the minutes from the July meeting.
Motion for approval of the July meeting? Keep that separate from?
Yeah, since we just passed the other one, I just corrected.
Sure. Okay, so, the motion to correct the minutes from the July meeting, is there a second to it?
Second.
Mr. Desmond seconds that. And is there any discussion by a member of the board? Hearing none, we're prepared for a vote. Mr. Evans?
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Agawis?
Yes.
Motion passes. So, the September 18th minutes, are there any questions on that? We're all set, right?
Right, we're all set. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, we're -- I'm sorry, yes. We're going to be moving on to, yes, the approval of the agenda. So, the agenda that is printed is in the packet. Are there any questions or concerns about what has been presented? Okay, I don't see that we have any. So, the agenda is set as printed for the rest of the meeting. And then, of course, we move on to item number five, A, that's related to 1329 Boyd. Mr. Evans, could you present to us on this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for the property owner of 1321 Boyd to allow the property to be split into two 7,200-square-foot parcels, where the zoning ordinance requires each new parcel to be 7,500 square feet. If I could direct everybody's attention to the presentation, just a brief summary, this property is located in a neighborhood north of Big Beaver and east of Rochester. It's basically in the center of the screen. I've zoomed in closer to the neighborhood. The subject property of 1321 Boyd is located here in the middle of the screen, outlined in red. Now, the yellow you see is the zoning map that's overlaid. And everything in yellow represents single-family residential, which all the property in this shot is zoned single-family residential. There's even a closer picture of the property. This is a survey provided by the applicant that shows the existing conditions. And what they want to do is split this parcel, essentially bisecting it down the middle and creating two resulting parcels that are 7,200 square feet in area. As indicated earlier, the ordinance requires that newly-created parcels be 7,500 square feet in area. So, in order to proceed, they need relief from the board. I'll turn it back over to the board members for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there any inquiries or comments or questions from the city's staff? Vice Chairman Agawis?
A question for Mr. Evans. I wasn't on the board two and a half years ago, and I'm wondering, at least for my background, can you give us a little insight on why it was denied last time around?
Well, clearly, the board didn't believe there was a practical difficulty with the matter. In order to enumerate any further, I might have to review the minutes, and I didn't do that.
Anyone else for city staff? Okay, we'll call the petitioner forward. So, if you could please identify yourself and your relationship to the property in If there's several people coming forward, you'll all have to identify yourself.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Phil Ruggeri. I'm a legal counsel for the petitioner. To my right is Michael McLaughlin. He's the principal of the application of Delmar Homes. I've had an opportunity to look at the previous tapes regarding this property. This subdivision was built and established back in 1926. It's over 70 years old, and the lots are all basically 60 by 120. The -- back in 1946, the particular original owner of this property decided to build a house on two lots as opposed to the one lot, which the entire sub had done. Consequently, you've enacted a new ordinance here in Troy that requires a 7,500-square-foot minimum for the lot. And being that these lots are 60 by 120, it falls 300 square feet short. Now, our dilemma is this. Under the ordinance, rather than re-splitting the lots and getting them back to the original size of 60 by 120, we are forced to, if we want to build a home, we'd have to build one house on two lots versus building two homes on two lots. If you look at the characteristic of the entire subdivision, they're all 60 by 120. The houses are about 1,400 square feet. As I've indicated, they're well over 70 years old. And Mr. McLaughlin has taken over this property. He's one of three owners of this property within the last two years. And he has taken down that home. He's already removed it because it's an eyesore for the neighborhood, and he's very much acting in good faith to want to proceed with building some nice new homes that would actually enhance the neighborhood. The issue and the crux of the matter is the previous petitioners did not establish practical difficulty or extreme hardship as you are required under the Board of Zoning Appeals requirements. If you look at this parcel, for whatever reason, in 1946, and you can see the size of the home, most of that house is on lot number 29. And, yes, 29. And he has a little bit of a garage going on at 28. The reason that gentleman, that I can surmise, that built one house, he just wanted more space. But since that time, the house has dilapidated, and there's been a road system now that runs adjacent to lot 28 to the south, and that leads to a school in the back. So, what's happened at this point, that road is causing a problem, I think. It makes that lot, 28, more difficult to build. You'd have to do some kind of isolation factor, such as landscaping, what have you, to make that lot a little bit more attractive because of all the traffic that goes to and from to the school. Now, looking at this particular project, and economics always plays into everybody's role for any development. And I know that's not the criteria that the Board of Zoning Appeals looks at. But from a practical difficulty and a hardship, that 300 square feet is causing extreme hardship to the developer or the owner of the property, the petitioner, whatever you want to call, by having them be forced to use two lots, they're identical to the 74 lots in this subdivision, to build a home, as opposed to using just one at a time. Now, if you allowed him to have the variance, he would be able to erect state-of-the-art homes that are similar in size or shape of the existing homes, but they would be brand-new. They would actually enhance the neighborhood, and they would allow and perhaps encourage other neighbors to renovate their homes or do some tear downs as well to make themselves up to state-of-the-art and to avoid the dilapidation that's already happened with this home. I saw the comments from the neighbors in the past. They were making comments about the road system. It's going to cause difficulty for people coming in and out of the road, for people viewing, and so on. I don't see that to be an issue. But I do know that this particular proposal keeps it consistent with the characteristics of the neighborhood, and it shows that it would not only not be deficit or negative impact, but it would be a positive impact on the entire neighborhood. There would be no noise factor, no impact on the neighbors. You're simply building, you know, current-size residences on a vacant piece of land. You're giving immediate tax base to the city. You're providing -- you've removed an eyesore. You're allowing this property to become feasible. Because currently, and by the fact that you've denied in the past the last two petitioners, shows you that this property is not economically feasible to develop. Forget about profitability. The cost of the land and the cost of construction today renders this property useless to build just one house. It's just plain and simple. And the fact is, you'd have to build a much larger home, which would be inconsistent with the character of the existing development as it is. These homes are 1,400 square feet. You'd have to build something 2,500, 2,700 square feet. And I'm a developer. I do a lot of building, and I'm a zoning attorney. Been doing it for 38 years. And I can tell you, this house would stick out like a sore thumb. There's no question. It wouldn't fit in the neighborhood. So, we're at a crux here. What do we do? Do we force him to build one house that's uncharacteristic for the neighborhood? Or do we build two homes that is characteristically feasible for the neighborhood? And you're only talking about a small portion of land. It's 300 square feet. It's about, it's five feet. Now, another factor with the ordinance amendment is that virtually all these homes that are in the subdivision, by the change in that ordinance, makes every one of these houses non-compliance with that ordinance. Because everybody's got the same problem, because they're all 60 by 120. So, in the future, if someone decides to knock the house down, they've got to come in before you and ask for the same variance, because it's just one single lot. Well, here, it makes no sense to do 120 by, I mean, it would be, yeah, 120 by 120 would be the size of that lot for this one house versus 60 by 120, which is everybody's lot in the sub. So, 74 homes are like that. And for whatever reason, that gentleman had built that house or that family back then, I think it's just to have space. It doesn't make any sense in today's world, okay? Because of the aging of the subdivision and so on and so forth. But I've gone through the criteria that you have for showing the practical difficulty, and I believe we've met all five standards that are required. Okay, I mentioned about the characteristics of the neighborhood. I think the rest of the sub, as I've indicated, is all the same size. So, putting it back to its original state and allowing him to build on two lots fits within the character of the subdivision. The dimensional variance for each lot is the same as the 74 that are there. So, we're not asking for anything of the ordinary, but it's consistent with the development that's already been there since 1926. This is not a personal nature-created problem. This is a problem that the ordinance has caused. The ordinance is now superimposing on all these parcels the same restriction, okay? As I've indicated earlier, that any one of these other lots, if they have to tear down, they've got the same problem that we have. So, we'd like to snip the bud and say, "Look, you know, you've got a situation where these houses are already built. Everything's in conformity at that time. You know, let's leave well enough alone and let them build in accordance with what's already there." In fact, you're going to encourage them to fix their homes and make them a lot more attractive so that they have more longevity. We didn't create, the previous owner did not create this problem, nor is my client. That was strictly by the ordinance change. And as I've indicated, this is not harmful or upsetting to the characteristic of the subdivision. It's actually a positive factor that's being brought, because you're bringing brand-new homes. And in fact, Mr. McLaughlin has added another feature. In your packet, we have the Colonials, which are about 2,000 square feet, which I think are kind of large. And I told him that might not be as characteristic for that as that neighborhood, because they're 1,400 square feet at that point. So, what he's done is, he's got a more modernistic approach to subdivision with a couple of ranch styles, which are, as such, just a little bit different, stone and brick. But they essentially are 1,700 square feet, either one of these choices. And that's something that would fit into the neighborhood. Okay, you're not overbearing, because if you start getting into 2,000 square feet enough, I think you're going to have a situation where it's not characteristic of the subdivision. You want to keep it small. 1,400 is not plausible. It doesn't make any sense. But 1,700 is a good fit, and I think that product is excellent. Now, I listened to a couple of tapes in the past, and I'm very hard-pressed to see why they were denied, those other petitioners. Because I know, you know, the ordinance always means something when you make changes, and they mean for the good. But I think your board is here to fix problems that might occur when something happens. That's why we have the right to appeal. A Board of Zoning Appeal is a very, very strong process in our government, and I think they have to try to rectify situations such as this. What do you do? I mean, for five feet, 300 square feet, you're causing the developer and all the predecessors to be forced to build one house on two lots. I don't think there's any impact whatsoever, other than unifying the sub by just putting two houses. So, that's the crux of our argument. I think, you know, we're in a real tough situation. Mr. McLaughlin does not want to walk away from the project like the predecessors did. They flipped the property when they couldn't get their variance. He's here acting in good faith. He tore the house down. He spent that money, and that was approximately, what, $8,000, $10,000? $15,000 he spent to tear it down. It was an eyesore to the community. And this is not the greatest site with, as I've indicated, you've got that road system and school. So, you've got a very difficult piece to begin with. And I think it would warrant strong consideration by this board to consider this appeal to you to allow him to build the houses. I respect your position. I respect your decisions in the past. But I'd like you to really dig into the merits of what that ordinance is really doing to this property and what impact it's really having on the neighborhood. And we leave it in your hands. I mean, this is what your decision is for us, and that's why we're here to appeal for you and to you. If you have any questions about the development itself or any other questions that I can answer, we're here for you. And I thank you for your time.
I have a question.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
It's five feet in the rear, but on the side, have you approached the school district and their property? On the side, it's two and a half feet each to get to the, for a total of five feet for both properties.
Haven't done that. I think what you're end up doing is you're making the lots inconsistent with the rest of the lots along the way. I don't even know if the school district was immutable to selling anything off. We haven't explored that. This is the first step that we thought would be appropriate, is to come before you as the Board of Appeals and make our argument there. Certainly, I think that's maybe a fallback position if Mr. McLaughlin wanted to pursue it if we were denied. But I'm not so sure. Dealing with the school system, my experience is not the easiest. You know, they don't like to sell property. It can get caught up in a lot of red tape, and chances, I think, would maybe slim, even though it's just a little bit of land. It's just like, this is just a little bit of land. That's why we're asking for a variance, because there's not much involved here. It's really, it's 300 square feet, which is, you won't even know the difference. I mean, it's the same as the rest of the neighborhood, so.
I have a couple of things. So, I'm just going to start with one quick thing. So, let's just clear the air a little bit.
Sure.
You said you're going to put this in our hands to make the decision. Sir, the people's representatives have placed this in our hands to make the decision, regardless of your opinion. So, I'm going to move on to the next thing, and I have a quick inquiry, and then I'm going to go on. Mr. Evans, so, related to item 5A, which is related to the property, 1321 Boyd, can you please answer one quick question? Is this one house and two lots, like the petitioner's representative has stated to us several times here tonight? Or is it one house, one lot?
Well, the legal description will say that it's two lots, but the zoning ordinance allows a lot or a combination of lots to be considered as one zoning lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it is one zoning lot. Okay, great. So, just a quick overview of some of your comments. You talked about the longevity of the neighborhood and the property. You talked about the profitability. You spoke about the economic feasibility. You thought that if the developer's petition was approved, that would encourage others to refurbish their homes, and that's a good thing for the neighborhood and also the influx of new taxes to the city. So, if you've been doing what you claim to have been doing for 38 years, you know that we can't consider any of those things. That's outside the scope of this board.
No, that's the practical aspect.
It's not the practical aspect. Longevity of the neighborhood is not.
No, I'm not saying it's our reasons. I'm just pointing out considerations I want.
Oh, I think pretty clearly, these were our arguments for us voting in favor. So, I'm just trying to, you know, I mean, you've been doing this a lot longer than I've been, and I've been on this board a long time. I certainly haven't been here 38 years, but we can't consider any of these. We have to look at if the property, if there's a problem running with the land, and we can't look at the fact that this is going to potentially help with a new development, new taxes, which obviously that does help the city. That's not for this, in this board's purview to look at all. We can't look at what one economic development may or may not cause to a neighborhood as far as other people wanting to unleash their wallets. We can't look at the economic feasibility to a developer's bottom line. We can never consider that. We can never look at the profitability to walk away from one project or the other within our decision-making and the longevity to the neighborhood. I think Troy's neighborhoods are pretty strong, and certainly, any one property can be improved. But I'm just saying that we hear these things constantly from the microphone that you're speaking at. And if you're not speaking to irregular-shaped parcels or things of that nature, that's beyond the scope of what this board can factor. And I think you should be aware of that, because that's how, I'll be casting my vote here tonight, because that's our charge from City Council.
Sure, I understand. The problem is, the property is irregular. It's 120 by 120. It should be 60 by 120. It should have two lots.
And if that's your opinion, that's.
That's one of my arguments.
Stick to that one area, because, you know, it's my time, but it's also a colleague's time, too.
I'm not saying that.
It's the public's time.
I'm not saying that my experience is pointing things out that don't apply. I want to look at the practicalities of the overall arguments that exist in the world. We can't live in a tunnel. You have to understand, those arguments are out there and not necessarily part of what your determination's going to be. And I respect that. But I want to point out that the property has a hardship in and of itself because of the size. It's too big for the sub, and it's also got a road system along to the south that leads to the school that makes that property much, much less attractive. So, we need some help by asking for a variance. It's a very, very difficult, if not impossible, property to develop under the current ordinance, and the ordinance is what caused the issue. Now, we need to have this property. Back in 1946, it was a non-issue. You didn't have a school. You know, you had small homes. Today, there's a lot of pressure for homes throughout Troy. Troy's a great community to be in, and there's a pressing need for good residential homes. And the point is, that house is dilapidated. It's gone. It was torn down because it was in such bad state. I'm not saying the neighbors are, their houses are falling apart, but they're 70 years old, and that's a factor that you have to think in the back of your mind. Now, this can help the whole project out. Now, you can weigh that for whatever you think and not listen to it all, and I can respect it. But this property has got substantial problems. Substantial.
Okay, thank you. Any of my colleagues like to inquire of this petitioner's representative? Mr. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you were approached by your client to represent the developer, and you looked at the past history of the project when it came in front of the board, what issues did you see that apparently didn't come up in previous discussions that would make you believe that there was some new information here for the board to consider?
Well, I saw there were several members on the board that were looking in favor of giving the variance, okay? And then, Paul Evans had suggested, "I look at the tapes." So, I went ahead and looked at historical tapes, and most of the arguments were, much as Mr. Clark said, they're all about economics, about, you know, profitability of the developer. You know, that's an aspect of any developer. I understand that. But they never really grasp the argument of practical difficulty and the five criteria that you need to establish, okay? And I felt it wasn't clearly brought on the table. And I thought that some of the comments made by the board members, that you need to give us an opportunity to vote in your favor if you can show us the practical difficulty. And I'm eliminating the economics at this point. I'm just saying that the proof is in the pudding. The subdivision was built in 1926, and everything was 60 by 120. And why that gentleman in 1946 decided to use two lots is basically he wanted just more space, okay? But he's gone, the house is gone, and now you've got the situation here, but what do you do with it? Okay? It makes, no one's going to go in here and build one house. It's just not economically feasible, and that is an argument, okay? Not about profitability, but you just, it's nearly impossible to do that. We're saying just restore that property back to what it really was, because your ordinance disallows that. It's causing a difficulty for anybody to do anything with that property, because the ordinance is making us put in another 300 square feet per lot. And I think that is an unfair burden that's been imposed on the property. That is a hardship. It's a strong hardship, because the last set of petitioners that came in here, they didn't drive the point home, but they were there. They just didn't drive it home. And I think it's important to realize that, you know, it just can't be us coming in here. Other people recognize that's a difficult piece of land, and they flipped it when they said, "If I can't do two houses, I don't even want to bother. It's just not, it's not going to make any sense." So Mr. McLaughlin, perhaps he jumped the gun. He tore the house down, but he wants to act in good faith. He doesn't want his property to be an eyesore for the neighborhood. He tore it down. He wants to move forward, and he wants to move forward with two lots. And, you know, if he doesn't get the grant tonight, then he could be sitting on this property, could be sitting on it forever, or he'll have to flip it, and it'll be somebody else's problems. Maybe somebody else looks at it differently, but I don't see it. I see this to be a very, very difficult property. So getting back to your argument, I think you can see the dilemma that we're in. I think you can understand that this is not purely driven by all profitability. It's an actual hardship that's happened because of 1926, 1946, and then when the enactment of the amendment that had come about. All those factors have caused a burden on this property that's not involving the other 73 lots in the subdivision. It's only involving these two lots. And then if anybody else is in the same situation where their house becomes deteriorated to the extent that it's no longer habitable, they're going to have to come back here and say, "We want to redo our house." Well, you know, you're not in compliance. You're going to have to get a variance. And that's no different than him. Or if he takes his lot and spins off a little section of land, then he's got enough to comply, but what do you do with the other piece? Do you ask for a variance for that piece of land? I mean, he's in the same boat. So why not do it right and just say, "We split it exactly what it was like originally, and you're consistent with the entire uniformity of that subdivision from 1926," and he's going to build houses that are consistent with the neighborhood. It's 1700, and he'll even put that as a condition on the zoning grant if you will allow it. So that's pretty much been my argument. I, you know, I see it, I feel it, I taste it, and I just know that it's, currently it's just not, it's not fair. It's not proper. It's a hardship, plain and simple.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
One thing we should clarify is that this Boyd Street was built in a couple phases. All the houses with the sidewalk in front of them were built much later, somewhere between 1963 and '74.
Okay.
So they're not nearly as old as what you're characterizing for the portion between the property in question in Rochester, Rhode.
I was not aware of that, so thank you.
Desmond, did you have something?
Yeah. When, what year was this purchased by the...
Mike, was it?
2016.
2016.
Does the previous owner, David Pardoon, have any ownership interest in the LLC that now held on?
No, no, not with the Delmar, no. Mike's totally the sole owner.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for this gentleman? Can you have a seat, please? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
So would anyone like to inquire of our city administrator? Yes, Mr. McCollough, or Mr. Evans?
I'd just like to clarify, the petitioner made several comments regarding houses in the neighborhood that are on smaller lots, similar to the size that he's requesting a variance for tonight. Our zoning ordinance has a section that talks about non-conforming lots of record, and these are lots that were created before the ordinance went into effect, that now they might be undersized or under width. And what the ordinance says is that in a district where there are single-family dwellings are allowed, if you have a non-conforming lot of record, which I'm guessing many in this neighborhood are, you are allowed without a variance to build a single-family home and accessory dwellings, provided you can meet setbacks, height, and other requirements. So houses on non-conforming lots in the area that might want to be rebuilt, a variance would not be required because the lot is undersized.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, please.
How does that differ from the lot in question?
Well, the lot in question consists of two lots, but the zoning lot, which is what the zoning ordinance regulate, looks at the borders of, if you can draw it, one single continuous border around the outsides of both lots combined.
Mr. McCollough?
Mr. Evans, is this one parcel tax ID? So this is a one, this is only billed for one tax ID, correct?
Uh...
It's not billed as two parcels?
I don't know, but even if it were, the zoning ordinance allows two different tax ID numbers to be one parcel.
Okay. Anyone else for city staff? Okay, so at this point in time, we are going to, I think what we'll do is a kind of a variation. We'll do the public hearing, and then I'll call in Vice Chairman Agawas to give us an update. I know there was quite a few communications on this matter, but I think it's important so we can perhaps engage with the public on the feedback that we've received. So if you'd like to address the board on this matter, please proceed to the podium. Identify yourself at the microphone, one person at a time.
Diane Alati at 1308 Boyd, lived directly across from the school driveway, and I've been up here many times before on this matter. I did send an email to the planning department, and I hope that that email was shared with each of you. Okay. And the previous, the first variance request was in August of 2004, and then there was a lull until 2015 and '16. Regarding the statement of practical difficulty, "The characteristics which make compliance with dimensional requirements shall not be of a personal nature." To me, it does appear to be personal, since one new house has been listed online for 500 days with two realty companies, Zillow and Trulia. Now, all of a sudden, two houses appear to be a better fit than the one that was originally to be built, because one house did not sell does not create an unreasonable hardship and practical difficulty to grant a variance request so that two houses can be built. The description on Trulia reads, "Nice, oversized, 120 by 120-foot lot to be built." And then the proposed variance will not unreasonably, this is an E understatement of practical difficulty, "The proposed variance will not unreasonably increase the congestion in public streets or increase the danger or public safety. The corner of Boyd and the Baker School driveway is congested twice and sometimes three or more times a day, five days a week, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM, from 2:15 to 3:15, late afternoons and evenings when they have events. Students walk and bike this area daily to get to school. Adding another driveway of a second house will not improve the situation." In the attorney's comments, he commented that having a second house will improve the appearance of the school driveway. The improved appearance of the school driveway is not the issue. Safety is the issue here. And I know that we've gone over that before. Safety of the students walking and biking to school, the safety of the parents dropping and picking up students, the safety of the school buses, and the safety of the residents that in the morning are trying to get to work and run into that right at that corner. And so, and in view of this, I do not see a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant a granting of the variance. So I just would appreciate consideration on that. Thank you for your time.
Before you go, I have a question for you. I guess this could go in two different directions, obviously. Speaking to the aesthetic nature of the neighborhood, how it looks and everything, you're across the street. Would you rather look at two ranches that are about 1700 square feet each, or one much larger colonial?
One, just one, because it would leave more space around it, and it would, it would only make one driveway instead of two there. What I didn't mention also is, there's very limited street parking in that area because of the, that being the school district. We can't park on our side of the street, so sometimes you have no place to put your car. If you can't park down in that area, if you put another driveway, I mean, even if it's for a few minutes sometimes to back out of the driveway, if there's another driveway there, then that eliminates that little bit of space, too. So it's been problematic for a long time there. And also that the school driveway is not wide enough for two-way traffic, so it all gets backed up in there. It gets backed up some days all the way down Boyd, and no one can get through. So putting another driveway there, to me, makes it worse.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board on this matter, please?
Good evening. My name is Anne Schonbeck. I live at 1393 Boyd. I've lived there for 48 years. I take offense to the fact that this gentleman is referring to our neighborhood as dilapidated in that house, which I don't feel that was dilapidated house, and that the people that live in the neighborhood can fix up their houses because he's going to put something that's a nicer house on our block. I feel that one house is what was agreed on. I've been up here, been here five different times on these variances. I don't understand that, why we have to keep reliving this and reliving this when it's still the same property, it's still the same variances. It was voted down before, and why we're up here again, doing the same thing again. The house that was on there was not a dilapidated house. We have a lady here that lived in it. She lived in it, she was very happy with it, but then they sold it, and they kicked her out. We have another lady here that lives next door to this property that would cause a lot of problems with her, with this house being right on top of her. I think our houses in our neighborhood were built in 1969, my house being one. It's not dilapidated. It's been fixed up, as most of the people in the neighborhood, even the front of the block, have remodeled their houses and fixed them up. We have no houses in our house that are blight, in our neighborhood, that are blight. We have one house right now that is being built on a lot, a huge house, that has been sitting there for over a year, being built. He obviously is building a house in our neighborhood that's huge. There has been new houses built in our neighborhood that are brick houses. They're nice. They fit in, okay. They're not like our ranches and things like that, but they're very nice houses. We have a very nice block, and to put two houses in there that would cause a problem, like Diane said, with the school, I don't know what they call it, a driveway, because they don't call it a street. I'm not sure what it is. That is awful. I go to work in the morning at quarter to eight. I can't get down my street. I've almost been hit, I don't know how many times, because they won't put a stop sign up there. They've just got a yield sign. Those people come just whipping out and whipping in. They don't care who's on that block. The problem with that lot there, when you call it blight, it's blight because nobody that's owned that lot, for however many people have owned it since I've lived here, they don't clean it up. They let all the foliage grow all over the fences, and it grows. The guy that lives across the street from me, he went down with his chainsaw and cut some of the stuff off, because you can't see in or around it. That's an eyesore. But nobody does anything about that. That's not dilapitation of the house. That's of the property itself. I feel that putting two houses on that lot would cause a hardship for a lot of the people, the parking, the street, and the school property, that we have two schools behind us that we're dealing with, people coming in and out of that street and congesting that whole area. So that's my, I don't know why we're here again, but I guess you can do it as many times as you want every time they change of owner. I'm not sure. But we've been up here many times arguing about this, and it gets denied, and then we're here again. So I thank you for listening to me. I love my neighborhood. I've been there a long time, and I hope that this does not pass.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Agawas, could you give us a report on the communications from residents and others on this matter? We'll go back to the public comment in a minute.
A few of these might be overlapping from what we've heard already, but I think I have seven emails here, and they were all against granting a variance.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board on this matter? Is there anyone who would like to address the board on item 5A? Please step to the podium and be recognized. Okay, we're going to close out the public hearing at this point in time and bring it back to the board table for further inquiry or conversation or action, possible action. Someone like to be recognized? Mr. McCollough?
I'm kind of familiar with the area, having taught at the school for 32 years, and that driveway is very narrow, and it is very dangerous. Putting a second house in there would add to congestion, because, and I don't think it's safe for the house. I think it's not a good situation. I don't see the characteristics, the practical difficulty of the characteristics, because this was created by a previous owner. I don't see this as having the practical difficulty as that you could build another house on there and be very nice, and have lots of space, and put a swing set and have your child grow up and know that you're in a good area. But buying it in, too, is purely for profit. So I struggle with the statement of practical difficulty that the petitioner has. I don't believe it has practical difficulty. My suggestion or recommendation would be that the owners contact the school district, see if they want to buy part of the property, expand that driveway, and then build on the existing lot, one lot that would be, fit that neighborhood according to our zoning ordinances as they are now. So I'm not, I don't like it.
Thank you, Mr. McCollough. I know that I've been in that neighborhood, and I've known many different people that have lived, seems like that's one neighborhood in Troy that I've been in more than any other, other than ones that I've lived in over the many years I've been here. And just been on Boyd Street, I believe at the beginning of school and numerous times after school that's out, and it is an absolute gridlock situation. I do know that, and I can understand why the neighbors are very concerned about any potential changes and taking any parking off of the street, especially with Troy's no parking on one side in practically every neighborhood residential area. So, and I'm with Mr. McCollough. I struggle with a practical difficulty or hardship here. You know, it seems almost like when, and I don't know all the dynamics, because I haven't studied Troy's school's decision to put the second school in there, on that property, but there are two schools there. It's not one. It's like, kind of like double the pleasure on one side of the coin for kids and families, for educational opportunities, and then double the problems, headaches, traffic, and certainly safety concerns there. So it is a unique situation that I think we need to obviously proceed with caution, but I will defer to any other of my colleagues here who would like to be recognized. Someone would like to be heard? Vice Chairman Agawas?
Maybe just for a change of pace, just for conversation, maybe I can argue for the petitioner for a second. I understand that there's a potential safety and congestion issue, and hardship is a bugaboo, obviously, but just looking at the uniformity of the neighborhood. Mr. Evans, can you put up a slide or page 11 there? I was looking at the parcel sizes for the immediate houses on Boyd. There's seven on the north side, 11 on the south side there, and they range between 7,200 and 7,600 square feet. The average is about 7,400 square feet, and the median is 7,300 square feet. 12 out of the 18 wouldn't meet the minimum requirement of 7,500 square feet. So in one sense, I like the idea of splitting, having smaller houses, having more uniformity in the neighborhood. Too often, I see developers try to get greedy on the other direction and overbuilding and trying to tear down the smaller, older homes with bigger, newer ones. I think that's a good argument for the petitioner, for what it's worth. That's the math. My hands right now are tied with the hardship issue, though, and I need some help. If I see that there is a hardship, I'd like to grant the variance or vote for a granting, but until we get past that giant hurdle, I mean, we're back to square one, and square two, and square three, where the last three times we're doing it, so, for what it's worth.
Ms. Cooper?
I echo Mr. Agawas's point, but I also understand, we're not supposed to consider traffic and congestion as part of our practical difficulty, but having been a parent that's driven down Boyd and avoided it because my kids went to high school and middle school there, I really think that we need to somehow also consider the traffic safety issues. I don't know, I just, it's a disaster waiting to happen, that area. We, I petitioned, so I've been in front of the PTAs at both schools, talking about what can we do as parents to improve the safety, because there's kids that are walking, there are parents that are driving, and because IA is a high school, International Academy East is a high school, there are also students, students who are driving. So it's a really crazy mix. So that's what really, I know I shouldn't be considering the traffic safety, but that really bothers me.
Well, I would say to Ms. Cooper, on that point, that we can consider, and I think that... the example I'm going to use, which is the closest thing that, in my memory, one of my other colleagues may remember a different situation that we dealt with that, that I've forgotten, but the Sonic on John R. by Oakland Mall, which was years ago, Mr. Lambert was here, I know, and I think Mr. Eisenbacher was, and, so the developer was in front of us several times, and we denied the first go-around. And the second, they listened to what we had to say, and it's not apples to apples to this petitioner's request, but there was a significant traffic concern, because anyone who's on John R., just north of 14 mile road, understands that anytime like after Labor Day and until January something, it is literally a train wreck of traffic. So, they came back with a replanned out parcel with ingress only, and then the out-traffic had to dump onto Oakland Plaza Roundabout Lane, and that has helped. I know that some voted for it, final version, and then it passed, and I voted against it, but at the end of the day, it is, it works far better than it would have. And, so that was, I think, our greatest concern at that moment in time, was because there's accidents, there were accidents galore there already, and that would have just, you know, impeded the ability to kind of like, avoid that type of situation. So, we did take action on this board and was clearly, I think, the greatest factor that we had considered. But, if you'd like to maybe inquire to Mr. Evans or Mr. Motzni on that point, they could kind of give you further counsel.
Do you have any?
Well, one of the criteria, the fifth criteria actually doesn't mention specifically traffic, but it does talk about congestion and that sort of thing. If the proposed variance will be harmful to the area, which might involve traffic, that can be considered, that's correct.
Impairs the public health, safety, and welfare?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there something over? Vice Chairman Agawas?
Oh, I was going to say the exact same thing. It's the fifth point of the statement of practical difficulty, that we can consider anything that could potentially impair health or safety, so, exactly the same thing.
Would anyone else like to be recognized on the board? Mr. Desmond?
I'll go for it. Well, I mean, clearly this lot was designed originally to fulfill this purpose, I mean, there's not really a lot of doubt about that. It's still written in the public record as two separate lots, even though the zoning has changed around it. However, based on the fact that the zoning's changed around it, I mean, you can't really make the zoning ordinance its own hardship. I mean, at the end of the day, that's, I see both sides of this. I see almost, almost no difference between the idea that if one of these other houses burns, they can rebuild another one exactly like it in its spot, and they can't return these two properties to what their original, you know, intention was. I understand there's the semantic difference of, you know, the zoning being different on this, but the reality is, is that's what those lots were for. I do see that as a reality, however, I mean, that's not the law now. So, the law now is that that zoning or the ordinance has changed, and I mean, we can't really go back and say, well, it shouldn't have changed for this particular lot, because it did. Another thing is, is health and safety ongoing is one thing, you know, if there's two houses there and that edge to congestion, that's one thing, but the eight to 12 months of construction that it will take to put those properties up will effectively eliminate the back exit from this, from this school. I mean, I have built property for years, I don't see a way with a very tiny amount of space like that, that you're going to be able to have the machinery in place for the amount of time that it takes to put a property up, that will not basically shut down that whole back exit from the school. I mean, there's going to be cement trucks in place, there's going to be heavy machinery, there's going to be, you know, dirt excavation equipment, it's going to be, basically for a school year, it's going to be wrecked. So, I don't know what the protocol is, he wants to talk. Do I have to call him back up?
This is a board matter at this point in time.
So, I mean, at the end of the day, I do see that there's some, some reasons that, I mean, in a perfect world, this would go back to that state, but I don't have anything within this statement of practical difficulty that would allow me to say, hey, I make a motion based on A, B, C, D, or E, because there isn't one. So, I mean, that's, it's my two cents. As much as I would like to say, yeah, go for it, I don't see a bureaucratic way to do that.
Would, would a member of the board like to be heard for the purpose of offering a resolution on this matter? Mr. Lambert?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. McCauley. I think Mr. McCauley is being, or Mr. Lambert's deferring to Mr. McCauley.
I'm playing it him first. I like to make motion to deny the request for splitting of this, of this lot.
Motion for rejection of the petitioner's request?
Yes.
Is there a second? Mr. Lambert seconds that motion. Is there any discussion by a member of the board on this matter? Mr. Eisenbacher?
I want to be explicitly clear in terms of the five items. In my opinion, A, does not apply, because there's no characteristic to the property which includes exceptional narrowness, shallowness, smallness, irregular shape, topography, vegetation, or other similar characteristics. B, I believe applies, characteristics which make the compliance, make compliance with dimensional requirements difficult must be related to the premises for the variance in Sot and not some other location. It is this property that is the item of concern. C, characteristics which make compliance with the dimensional requirements shall not be of a personal nature. This is not personal, this is directly related to the size of the land. D, characteristics which make compliance with dimensional requirements difficult must not have been created by, have been created by the current or previous owner. The current owner didn't create this, the three previous owners that we spoke about that have come before the board and requested variances, didn't create this, but the owner in 1946 that combined the lots created this. So, I don't believe D is fulfilled. And then E, the proposed variance will not be harmful or alter the essential character of the area in which the property is located, will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property, or unreasonably increase the congestion in public streets, or increase the danger of fire or essential, or endanger the public safety, or unreasonably diminish or impair established property value within the surrounding area, or in any other respect impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the city. As several of my colleagues on this board have stated, there is concerns about the safety with the adjacent drive and having an additional house where there's currently, or there was one residence. I don't believe it unreasonably increases the congestion, because it would just be two houses instead of one in the whole neighborhood, but there is the safety concern. I believe the proposal in our packet for a colonial is outside of the characteristic of the neighborhood, but the petitioner did present alternatives that would be more in line. But still, even if we're looking at this, that's three out of the five at most that I can get to, in favor, and there's two that are strongly against. So, I mean, or you could say it's two and a half to two and a half. It doesn't meet the majority of these statement of practical difficulty strong enough for me to vote in favor.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be recognized? Mr. Lambert?
Just one comment, I agree with the comments that have been made by Mr. McCauley, Mr. Eisenbacher about the practical difficulty. I think also, what would be a better course of solution on this, which was brought up both by Ms. Cooper, Mr. Eisenbacher, and Mr. McCauley, is that I cannot believe that the number of years this small little driveway has existed onto Boyd the way it has, and maybe a better solution rather than a variance to split the lot is for the owner of the property to approach both the school district and the city of Troy about resolving some of the access issues here, and that might resolve, even needing a lot split in the city or the school district, might work with the owner to purchase some of the property either here, or to get rid of that driveway and put another access point onto that school district property.
Thank you. My thoughts exactly. Of course, we don't control the school district or the city's decision on that matter, but I mean, clearly, it sounds like it's just a beyond, a problem, you know, for the people who live there. And I used to live in a neighborhood off of Maple Road that had parcels that were this small, and it is a concern when you have small parcel residential area, if somebody has a birthday party or a fill-in-the-blank, get-together family, you know, those, some of these houses, you put one, you can't put more than one car in front of the entire parcel, there's not sometimes room for two. And, so, you know, if there's 10, 12 people driving over to get together, it does cause a significant problem, especially within Troy where you have no parking on one side. And the addition of the additional driveway, I could see would be a significant issue for the neighbor, other neighbors. So, is there any other further discussion on Mr. McCauley's motion? Seeing on Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared for a vote. Thank you.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
No.
Mr. McCauley?
No.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Let me, can I just interrupt?
Oh, yes.
So, just for clarification to the board and the public, a yes vote is a vote in favor of Mr. McCauley's motion, which would deny the petitioner's request. A no vote is a vote to defeat the resolution and bring it back to the board table for possible further action. So, a yes is against the petitioner's request, a no is possible more discussion, or we potentially would move on.
So, for the motion to deny, would you like me to start over?
Please, Mr. Evans.
Okay.
I usually like to cover that, just for...
Sure. Mr. Eisenbacher?
Okay. Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Agawas?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
So, the resolution is approved, the petitioner's request has been denied. We move on to item number B, related to 387650. Mr. Evans, could you please present to us on this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a variance request from James McVie of Mr. Enclosure Sun Rooms to allow a proposed sunroom addition to the house, to be 37 feet from the rear property line. The zoning ordinance requires the addition to be 45 feet from the rear property line. I've got some overheads, just to brief a presentation. Subject property is located south of Waddles and west of Crooks, it's in the middle of the screen here, outlined in yellow, at 387650. Additional layout of the neighborhood. I've superimposed the zoning categories in color over the aerial. Everything in yellow is single-family residential. Property to the east is zoned neighborhood node, which is, allows a variety of commercial and office and service uses, and some residential. Now, that's a close-up of the property, and I've outlined the area in question where the addition is going to be proposed off the rear of the home. And this survey provided by the applicant shows the approximate outline of the addition. Now, the ordinance requires that this house and any additions to it be set back 45 feet from the rear property line, and as presented, the applicant is seeking relief so he can place a sunroof, sunroom structure 37 feet from the rear property line, and the application has provided us samples and architectural drawings of what the final product would look like. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Could anyone like to be heard? Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Evans, the email we have from Mr. Shahib from Choice Properties, can you indicate on that map which properties that they own there? They have the lot, the lot numbers, I believe, so I don't know if it shows, if you're able to tell.
You know, just to be safe, because there's a number of, at least two properties behind it, I'm going to check the city GIS, it'll take me just a moment.
Okay. While you're doing that, it's kind of interesting that they own those properties, but they were also the original developers of the subdivision, so they're opposing somebody who bought a house from theirs, in their sub, opposing them building a sunroom on there, but I thought that was interesting, so.
Anyone else like to be recognized?
I have a question.
Ms. Cooper?
Can you also, while you're at it, explain to us and viewers and audience what an N neighborhood node means, what it could become?
Sure.
Because if they build a sunroom there, and then the neighborhood node fulfills that property, fulfills what a neighborhood node will become, they may not want the sunroom there.
Well, the neighborhood node, and there are several, actually, a lot, a number of neighborhood node zoning districts in this city, they're commonly at corners of primary thoroughfares, and the intent of the neighborhood node was to provide a variety of uses to service the adjacent residential areas. So, for example, one thing you might not see in a neighborhood node would be a large regional big box store. The cities look carefully at the surrounding land uses, we've looked carefully at the existing parcel dimension or combination of dimensions, and what the neighborhood node does is place more of an emphasis on the design of the site and the architecture of the building, and then, than other parts of the zoning ordinance that aren't part of our form-based districts. So, one thing the neighborhood node does is allows a wide variety of uses, so it's not just commercial. You could have a small-scale retail, you could have office, you could have, in some neighborhood nodes, residential on the second floor. Drive-throughs are not permitted, there is an emphasis on the types of services and uses that would be beneficial or used by the adjacent neighborhood within about a 15-minute walk. So, there's a wide variety of uses that are allowed in the neighborhood node district, and that just depends on the street type, a busier street or not busier street, and the site type, a bigger site, or a combination of sites, or a smaller site.
So, example of a neighborhood node would be the condos at Long Lake and Rochester? That's a...
Ah, the ones on Off Bradley?
Yeah. There's, there's a couple of other places where we have neighborhood nodes.
Well, a neighborhood node across the street right here would be the 7-Eleven, the office building to the south. Those are examples of neighborhood node developments, those parcels were required, I'm sorry, those buildings were required to be right up to the road with parking, less dominance on parking from the, from the street. So, you have some parking along the road, but that's limited, and most of it's behind the building here on the side.
Okay, we are going to ask, Mr. Eisenbacher, do you want to have something? No? Okay. We're going to ask the petitioner to step forward and to identify himself, or if you are a representative.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, how are we tonight?
Very good.
Good. My name is Mike Moore, I represent Mr. Enclosure Sun Rooms, so I'll be speaking on their behalf. So, as you see, we are asking for an eight-foot variance. If we look at the map real quick, and we look at the lot size, the lot size in comparison to say 3912 or 3930 is quite a bit larger, and as we go to the other side of the property, 3840, once again, is a little larger itself. With the current variance, or with the current, yeah, with the current variance, R1B, those lot sizes are deeper, and from what I understand, if I did my homework correctly, those lot sizes are supposed to be, specifies a minimum of 15,000 square feet, and this current lot is 14,134. So, therefore, showing a little bit of impractical difficulty on the, on the lot itself, not giving us the variance or the rear yard setback that we're currently looking for.
Would anyone like to ask the gentleman a question? Mr. Lambert?
Is there currently some kind of a patio on the back of the house right now?
Yes, sir, there's currently a deck on the back of the property now, and the intention is to... the intention is to follow the footprint of the deck. It'll actually be just a little smaller in width than the current front footprint of the deck, and the way that the house sits in relation to the other properties, it, it's not going to create any obstruction, airflow, lighting, so on and so forth.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? You can have a seat, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we are going to open the public hearing on this matter. If you'd like to address the board, please step to the podium and be recognized.
Hi, I'm Bupesh Sharma, I am the owner of the house. I know we have applied for the variance, and, uh, for applying for the variance, we, we secured our neighbor's approval too. So, all the three neighbors in the back and the sides, uh, they're, they approved that, and I submitted that along with that. Also, as you said, the, the lot size seems to be smaller than, uh, which is for R1, R1B zoning, zoning, so that makes our, uh, whatever we want to do something, it's difficult. Also, this is not of a personal nature, is not created by us. Also, uh, it has not been created by previous owner either, and it's not a personal, this, this difficulty is not of a personal nature. So, most of the houses in the subdivision have some, some kind of deck, gazebo, or patio. This sunroom will replace the existing deck, as he just said, and will, will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent properties. In fact, as she pointed out, nodal development, right, what, what you said, there's no house in the back of our property there because of land, which is, and it's, no house is going to be built over there, you know? The house, it sits, it sits on the Crooks Road, and we are not going to block any air or any other thing, you know, for that house, or, or for the size of the house. So, also, it will not increase the congestion in the public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or endanger the public safety in any way. And the sunroom is for personal use. As you notice, the house is facing west, and the back of the house is facing east. So, during the day, it's always very hot, and we have not been able to use the deck as we should have. All these years, we have been living in that house for eight years. We hope, if we are allowed to build a sunroom, we should be able to use that, uh, area, uh, and, and enjoy our backyard in the sunlight. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to be recognized?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lambert?
Ask the gentleman a question.
Could you please step back? Thank you.
Are, are you the original owner of the home?
No.
Okay. Did, were you aware of the fact of the opposition from Choice Properties to your variance request?
No.
I was wondering if, and I don't know how my colleagues feel about it, but if you approached Choice Properties because of the fact they were the original developers of that subdivision, that they might get, have, be more friendly to your variance request, but that's just something to think about, depending on what we do tonight.
I was not aware of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be, uh, comment on these, this matter for us?
Hi, I'm James McVey with Mr. Enclosure. Why were we notified that the, um, Choice Properties had put, denied, you know, towards, when, we didn't get any information that they were...
This portion is for your comment.
Oh, okay.
This is not a question period for your fellow citizens for Troy. We are not the city administration.
Yeah, because we try to obtain something.
All of our, all of our packets are available online, and available to be reviewed online, and if there are any communications that come in after a certain deadline, like several days, they're not online, they're available here to the, you know, essentially, Mr. Evans is at like 24 or 48 hours lag, is that correct? So, as far as if somebody shares a communication for the board before this meeting, like after a certain time on Friday afternoon, it's not in the packet, is that correct? And would you make it available on our desk?
It actually depends on when we receive it and when the packet goes out, but ultimately, we want to make sure that if it's not in the agenda packet, that this board receives it, and those are available, anyone can contact our office. As a matter of fact, if the applicant would like a copy of the comment, just so they're aware, I'd be happy to share them out.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, have a good one. Anyone else like to be addressed on this, or address the board on this matter, or share a comment? We're going to close that portion out and bring it back to Mr. Vice Chairman Agawas for the public comment via written communication or electronic communication.
Yeah, just one email we've already talked about from Choice Development that's against the request.
Right? Okay, great.
Mr. Chair?
And, yeah, Mr. Evans?
In relation to Mr. Lambert's property, so the two properties referenced by Choice Development that they say they own, I'll just plant them out here on the overhead. There's the two adjacent to the subject property and directly to the east, so that would be this property here, and this property here. Those are the two that are referenced in their email.
Yes, the closest two.
Right.
Great. So, normally, we don't conduct the city business, we're representing the interests of the public and of Troy, but as Mr. Evans stated, the petitioner can get a copy of that letter after this meeting is concluded, or during normal business hours in the city of Troy. So, at this point in time, we are going to bring it back to the board for further inquiry or action. Please, Chairman Agawas.
Mr. Chairman, second time tonight, let me try from the petitioner's point of view. At this time, I have better ground to stand in, I think, because going through the statement of practical difficulty, I see them checking off all five boxes. To me, the exceptional characteristic is that the lot is smaller than the minimum size, it's 14,000 square feet instead of 15,000 square feet, that could have a play on how deep the backyard goes, and, um, uh, the characteristics aren't of a personal nature. Characteristics which make compliance with this dimensional requirements difficult are related to the premises. They weren't created by the current or previous owner, and as far as I can see, they won't negatively impact the neighborhood or environment around it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to be recognized? Mr. Eisenbacher?
Um, yeah, I believe that reading of the, the five criteria is accurate. Was that a motion, then?
It was not recognized as a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Lambert?
I would agree with what our vice chairman has indicated, but I still would like to have the opportunity for the petitioner to talk to Choice Properties to make sure that they have no objections to this, once they have an opportunity to interact with them, so I don't know if this is going anywhere, but I would move to postpone action on this for, until our next meeting.
There's a motion on the table for postponement until the November meeting, 2018, of this board. Is there a second for that motion? I'll second it. And so, we have a proper motion in front of the board. Is there any discussion on the motion? Vice Chairman Agawas?
The only thing I, I want to say is, usually when I see emails and opposition, we, we have a meeting right now, I wish they would have been here in person to discuss it, um, and I'm not a, I'm not a fan on postponing unless it's an, an emergency, so I, I think I'll be voting against this motion of postponement.
Sure. Just remember, there have been times when the petitioner couldn't be here, you know, they filed the paperwork, and then something pops up, either professionally in their business, family, health, what have you, so that, that has been hap, that has happened, so we really don't know, and of course, they don't have to attend, um, you know, communicating is communicating, but I think Mr. Lambert's motion, I think is a wise one, and it sounds like the petitioner clearly was unaware, maybe there's a, you know, quick conversation and every, all the parties could be on the same page, so I think waiting, especially since a sunroom at this point in time in the calendar year is not, um, most likely super necessary, and it's probably being planned for next, um, next spring and summer. Any other discussion on the motion? See, none? Mr. Evans, we're here for a vote. A yes vote would be postponing until the November agenda.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Agawas?
No.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
No.
So, motion passes, we will see, um, 3876 Fatty on our November agenda again, or next month, and we'll look forward to seeing you folks if you choose to come. I know that, that's an option. You can speak to Mr. Evans afterwards, or tomorrow, about, you know, any questions you might have. So, at this point in time, I, we're going to go over any communications that the city administration has for us. Mr. Evans?
I don't have any written communications, just like to note in your agenda is a, an updated copy of the rules of procedure. Last month, last month, you made a change to that, just allowing, uh, applicants to be notified by email, so I included that for your reference.
Yes.
Also, based on some discussion this board has last month, I modified the zoning board of appeals application to, uh, tell everybody they should meet with staff in advance of submitting an application, so we can discuss the particulars and get them educated on the five criteria that this board needs to find exists.
Sure.
So, I just wanted to report those two things have happened.
Very good. Uh, any concerns about what Mr. Evans just, just shared? Okay. We move on to miscellaneous business. Mr. Evans, is there any miscellaneous business?
There is not.
Is there any miscellaneous business from a member of the board? And we move on to public comment, so I'm going to open the public comment up. Uh, if you'd like to address this board on any matter, please present yourself to the podium to be recognized. If you'd like to be, uh, address the board on any matter, please proceed to the podium at this time. Final call for public comment related to the October 2018 meeting. Please proceed to the podium, and I will close that portion out, and item number nine is adjournment, we're adjourned.